Yeah, put it back there.
Are you a Badger fan over there?
Me?
Yeah, you got a little red streak in your face.
I think the brush paints are a little red.
Oh, okay, I thought they were red.
I'm a fan of the yellow.
All right, everybody, we're calling seating to order at five forty-five. Uh, thanks for being here tonight for our November tenth regular board meeting. We'll start with my call.
Amy Riddles Swanson.
Here.
Abe Smith.
Here.
Dominique Stewart. Rachel Henderson.
Here.
Dale Donkey.
Here.
Amber Kersting.
Here.
Michelle LeFrie.
Here.
Angela Wall.
Here.
We have a corner.
Emily Hines, here.
Sorry, I'm sorry. We do, we have a moral, I'm so sorry, and Jenny. Uh, let's hand over the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic where all is just stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And our mission statement, the school was strict in the Monomie area by embracing the unique needs and using the strengths of our diverse community. It's that it's that a huge preparing all students to become lifelong learners, caring individuals, and responsible citizens. We have any proposed changes to the agenda today? Okay. We have no recommendations and commendations, so we'll move right into our highlight on youth.
Good evening. Board members, you've heard from me an awful lot, so I think we're gonna try something new for the next several meetings. Instead of me presenting the highlight on youth, we'll rotate through our building principals. So tonight, um, Ms. Stacy Lee, she's filling in at the middle school on a long-term, uh, principal position. She's gonna do the highlight on youth representing the middle school.
Yeah, thanks, Bart. Bart's at the Packer game this year. So, highlight on youth, um, Monomie High School's been really busy, um, had some wonderful participation for our theater and our arts. They had some concerts, um, at the band show and also had a wonderful, um, theater show going on. And as you can see from the pictures, there's also our cross-country teams that had done really well in the conference, being both winning, um, championships for the bigger ones and also competing very well at state with Lauren, um, our number one runner, having a course record and being the fastest in the state, so very good spending the season for them. Monomie Middle School, we are doing exceptionally well. We just ended up, um, our fall sports season and we're moving into the winter sports season. We have over forty girls in swim, so we're pretty excited about that. I think we can contribute a lot of that to our coaches also being our teachers. Our staff is really involved in those programs and, um, being present. And so Haley Grace is doing a nice job of recruiting for our swim and she also coaches up in high school, so we are enjoying that. Um, we have JA in the day, so we have lots of careers, um, being presented to our eighth grade. And then we also, um, have Unity Week where we had stuff football team and I think there was soccer as well. Came and talked to, um, our pods about unity and teamwork and sponsorship, things like that. So that was really nice to get the community involved. And then we have waking sleepy hall, which was two nights and it was sold out crowds and they love performing at the label team. So, um, it's really good for our students to see that. Um, what else has he said? Really shine for us, Stacy. So, hmm, everything's sunny as I've been there, let's just say that, it's, it's going really well. The kids are very involved, um, we're working really hard at our academics and our staff is just really amazing, so, um, it was good morning.
Before Ms. Lee goes into the elementary schools, I just wanna point out, I thi- I think most people know what JA and a day is.
Oh, junior achievement.
But JA, yeah, JA stands for junior treatment, junior achievement. And, uh, we've had local businesses partner with us and they've done marvelous jobs, so thank you to our community partners. It was a great experience for our kids.
Our elementary schools have been busy with fall activities. Um, as you can see from the pictures, we had the fire awareness, where the local fire departments come and present about all things fire safety. Um, we went to the environmental site, a lot of our schools, um, visited and pre- checked in some really nice weather that we were having then. Not today, but back then, yes, we can look back and say it was nice. Um, they also celebrated Unity Day, you can see many colors of orange. Um, the elementary schools tend to really focus on inclusion and maybe sure everyone feels like they belong. And you can see that we also had Aiden come in and present some spooky stories. And Halloween on Friday was a blessing for our elementary schools and everyone enjoyed that. So that's our highlight on youth for the month.
Thank you so much, uh, it is nice to hear from new people, uh, part of the meeting. Any questions, um, or discussion on the highlight of the meeting? Great. Next up, we have our student representatives here to tell us what's going on at the high school.
Good evening, members of the school board. Once again, we are excited to share the recent activities happening at MHS. MHS Chess Club is hosting its first chess tournament Saturday, November twenty-seventh. This tournament is expected to bring players of all skill levels from across the area to MHS. MHS Chess Club President Miles Ogden has been the main organizational force behind this tournament. Round will be from nine AM to four PM. There's a ten dollar pre-registration or fifteen dollar onsite fee and all are welcome to attend. The girls' cross-country team competed at the WIA Division One State Championships at Wisconsin Rapids. Lauren McCullough was the individual state champion, breaking the former state record with a five K time of seventeen minutes and twenty-six seconds. Lauren was named Wisconsin Cross-Country Coaches Association State Runner of the Year. Bennett Schmidt was named to the All-Star second team. The team of Lauren, Bennett, Bella Drake, Addison Schubler, Reeve Reflet, Kai Barnher, and Sarah Palmer finished fourth overall, the highest team finish in MHS cross-country history. Lauren McCullough was also nominated to be an ESPN Athlete of the Week, and I just talked to her about it today and she did say that she didn't win that, so that is so great. The Monomie FFA attended the ninety-eighth National FFA Convention in Minneapolis, Indiana, from October twenty-eighth to October thirty-first. Twelve FFA leaders were chosen from the Monomie FFA chapter to attend this event. The FFA alumni helped to sponsor a portion of expenses. Kathy Forster, Josh Forster, Brittany Schultz, and Tom Solzner, all members of the FFA alumni helped to shatter the group. Students heard from various national speakers, including the National FFA Officers, attending leadership workshops and talking with business and industry leaders from various agriculture companies and colleges. This convention is the largest youth convention held in our nation with over sixty-seven thousand people in attendance. The Monomie FFA organization thanks the school board for the continued su- support. Hosa had incredible support at the blood drive. They were able to collect thirty-seven units of blood, which will go towards saving up to a hundred and eleven lives. That was ten more units than Hosa's goal. Hosa volunteers helped out with this event and checked donors in, kept the donors hydrated, hydrated, and gave them snacks, got to work on their patient interaction skills, and also set up and took down the blood drive. The high school SOAR program has had an exciting fall. They have created work and volunteer opportunities for several of our youth at UW South, Stepin Stone Food pantry, Goodwill, the Oak Senior Living, and Grace Episcopal Church Restaurant. The SOAR program also has two hydroponic lettuce farms up and running. They will be harvesting their third lettuce crop early this week to serve on the lunch lines at MHS. To celebrate Halloween, the unified PE and leadership students hosted a trunk retreat event for the SGMAs SOAR on Friday, October thirty-first in Manjip. Over twenty tables offered fun, interactive games and treats for seventy-five students. Additionally, Patty Strand of Hoofbeat Healing Center has received funding from the Fosters at writers to host the high school SOAR program at her house or at her horse farm for up to four hours a month. Students have learned how to groom a horse, enjoyed a scavenger hunt around her house, horse barn, and picked raspberries that students have used in cookie units. Preliminary plans and discussions are underway for the high school to become a Special Olympics Unified Champion School. This is a nationwide program aimed at promoting social inclusion of those with and without disabilities through intentionally planned and implemented activities. Finally, the SOAR program should be recognized for their vocational work that they do around the MHS campus, including picking up garbage outdoors, sweeping the halls, carrying through the blocks and pound, maintaining the MHS care closet with clothes, shoes, personal hygiene, and winter wear items, sanitizing the weight room, and cleaning the school district vans. MHS students have also been busy with academic and career planning. On October twenty-second, the junior class participated in cash course, which was formerly Man City Money, which is a hands-on simulation of adult financial life brought to us by Wisconsin Credit Union. Then, on October twenty-third, ten students took the Armed Services Vocational Aptitude Battery Test, which assesses abilities for military enlistment and career exploration, covering topics like science, math, moral knowledge, electronics, auto shop, and mechanics. Then, on November fifth, twenty students attended MEA Clinic Discovery Day for real-world learning experiences in healthcare fields. That is all we have for tonight, thank you so much for having us.
Thank you so much for being here, that was a really wonderful list of incredible accomplishments. It's always great to hear, you know, every month. Any questions for our student representatives? All right, thanks for being here. Um, we have nobody speaking for community communications tonight, so we'll move on to our revenue and expenditure reports for the month ended October twenty-fifth.
Yeah, um, as usual, I'll start with the revenue, um, report. The biggest change from last month is that equalization aid, as you can see, started to come in. We'll see much more of that revenue flowing in over the next few months, but it was a noticeable change from the prior report. Uh, next is the expenses by object. Um, probably the biggest one that sticks out is the property services, which are higher compared with last year. Uh, nearly all of that is due to, uh, fund forty-six expenses related to the tennis court project, uh, which is not complete. And then the expense by function, um, I, there isn't anything unusual or, or concerning here. Overall, uh, spending patterns are tracking, uh, as expected for this point in the year. Um, any variances, uh, in there or simply time, timing related reflecting when certain purchases and payments were made?
Under expense by function, it does look like fund fifty is quite a bit ahead of where they were at those times in previous years.
And most of that, I believe, is, is the un- encumbered amount is quite high compared with last year, so I think it's, uh, anticipated costs that are encumbered but not yet spent. But it's something I'll keep an eye on, uh, throughout the, the coming months here.
Is that like equipment purchases maybe, or you don't have any?
Um, it could be equipment repairs, things like that, but I could dig into it further for next time.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion on the revenue and expenditure reports? Next, we have our monthly employment report. And this is an informational report, any questions or discussion? Well, move on to our consent agenda, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Hi, folks.
Second. Motion by, only a second by Michelle. Tonight, we have minutes from our, uh, regular board meeting of October thirteenth and our special board meeting of October twenty-seventh. We have, um, general fund checks totaling two million, four hundred thirty-four thousand, nine hundred twenty-eight dollars and thirty-three cents, and cash receipts totaling a hundred eleven thousand, five hundred five dollars and eighty cents. Under donations exceeding a thousand dollars, we had a, uh, two thousand five hundred four dollars, fifty cents donation from community members and local businesses to our food service angel fund. Four thousand dollars, um, by various community members and sponsorship of MHS programs. Fifteen thousand dollars donated by the Monomie Area Booster Club to support, uh, athletic programs. And finally, we had several grants from the Emory Foundation, one thousand six hundred eighty dollars to the MHS Science Department for Chromebooks, Ruder, and Rowoff Pen, uh, and Incubator. Three thousand nineteen dollars to the Oakland Music Department. And three thousand twenty dollars to the MHS Science Department. And, any questions or discussion on the consent agenda? Right, seeing none, let's vote.
A motion passes unanimously. Next, we have our consent agenda, I'll entertain a motion to approve, I'm sorry, the personal consent agenda, I'll entertain a motion to approve the personal consent agenda.
Same here.
All right, motion of aids, second by Amber. Uh, we have, sorry, I don't know, we have just one resignation tonight. Any questions or discussion on the personal consent agenda? All right, seeing none, let's vote. A motion passes unanimously. Moving on to the action agenda, we have an action tonight to approve a resolution of support for a, uh, transportation safety grant through the, the city of Monomie is writing. So we'll start, uh, by reviewing a motion for our consaction item.
Second to third.
All right, motion of aids, second by Michelle, uh, do you wanna give us a quick summary of this?
Thanks, Rachel. Typically, we would bring something like this, a resolution to the board, one meeting ahead of time, so the board could review it and, and consider. That still can be done if that's what the board wants to do. However, in talking with Rachel about this, uh, getting ready for the meeting, uh, we didn't feel that there was any concern with this, uh, resolution. And what it is, like Rachel said in the, in the motion, the city of Monomie reached out to the school district asking for a resolution of support for a grant that they are writing. They are not asking for the, for, for the school district to contribute any funds or anything like this, just our supporters. And what is for, are for recta- rectangular rapid flashing weekends, RRFBs, um, that will be placed in proximity to, um, Oakland Elementary School and River Heights Elementary School, uh, city property, and really just to alert drivers and try to make the area safer for, um, the children and anybody else who would be, um, crossing the roads in that area. To me, it's a no-brainer, so, but I didn't wanna assume that, so we're asking for board consent tonight, uh, in approving this resolution.
Thank you, any questions or discussion, uh, on this resolution? I think it's pretty clear in the resolution, as Roger said, we're not being asked to, um, we have a hook for anything here, to support the city in their grant application.
I think it's great they're applying for this, there, it's, there's a safety there, and, you know, we always want to rescue and safety priority, so it's great.
All right, let's vote. A motion passes unanimously. All right, on to the discussion agenda. Our first item tonight is a report on our virtual education program. And I believe Ms. Stacy Lee is here to talk to us about that, do you have any questions?
Yeah. Is it making my presence known? So this was, uh, the responsibility of mine this year. Um, Katie did a nice job of setting me up for getting this going in the fall. Um, as you can see, it's remained pretty consistent. If you look at that first one, that's just the fall numbers, so that's why it looks so much lower, just wanted to point that out too, but it's, it's pretty consistent since, um, we don't have any COVID restrictions and things anymore. It's kind of evened out for the numbers that we have. Um, you can also see that our course completion, we're doing really well with that. Um, high schoolers tend to be taking on for classes that are not offered or to help with a scheduling problem or an issue. Um, at the middle school, we generally have mostly full-time students that are enrolled in virtual education, and that's a number of around twenty. Um, other times they take it because they want to take, um, band and choir. And so then they take a, a FIAID course. So, um, that's kind of what's being offered through our virtual education program. Um, the average course grade is up there at eighty-five percent. Um, our counselors and, um, we have Sylvie May Bowden at a high school and she keeps track of that and offers support throughout the school day. So just because they are virtual doesn't mean that they don't come in. Um, some students do come in for checks and things like that. WBS has done a really good job this year of, um, talking more about special education students that may be involved. And our case managers are doing a nice job of giving them an IEP at a glance or communicating about that. So, I, um, add them as, as advisors, uh, to, uh, virtual students' caseload, so that they are involved as well. The program strength, I would say, you know, we're, we're eliminating schedule conflicts and meeting the needs of students is, is the priority of our virtual education. We still very much honor face-to-face instruction and try and give students, um, everything that they need at the regular school day, but this is a nice option for those, those times when that cannot happen. Um, parents are very involved, families have an orientation meeting with someone from the school, whether it be a principal or a counselor, depends on the situation. Um, we've seen a lot more like mental health and, and things like that where a virtual half-day and then they come for another half a day for other academics, so we're very willing to work with families and students to make it the best fit possible. Areas for growth, like I said, we are, um, really trying to collaborate with families. We have finals coming up for, for them as well, and so a lot of them like to do, take it, um, onsite, so we do offer that at our schools with counselors, so we get feedback and can also talk them up if they want to register for the second semester. So that is our virtual education.
I'm really impressed with the last two years, um, of course, completion and the, um, averages of the, of the kids. So I don't know what, pretend, why that, why is that so good, but I mean, I'm just glad to see that happening. I think it's because some of the things we've put in place that have helped that, um, helped, helped that, um, go upbeat and, and range. My other question is, I, um, I think this is more with the dual enrollment kind of thing, but, um, I was wondering if a student does not complete an online class, do they have to end up paying for that, or if they fail it, do they have to pay for that class, or is?
There's a three-week grace period, so we really try and watch for that. Um, as you can see, like, we really don't have a lot of students that fail, like, we really did work with them. Um, so I can't answer that directly how much that would be, but I do know that there's a nice grace period for us if they want to unenroll. And then we have, um, a dashboard, it's called, that we can go on daily, weekly. It tells us how many assignments they're behind, it's a quick snapshot for every student. That's not an alert for us if a student is, is really far behind, so I feel like there's some really good communication that we, we really try to stop that before that would happen where a student would be failing.
Excellent, thank you.
Just a question, students that are enrolled in the virtual academy, can they also participate in campus activities or school activities?
Correct.
They can, so like?
Like homeschool.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, yes, kids and students, okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion on the virtual school update? I really appreciate the, um, report and the thoroughness and format of the report for you to be, thanks for bringing this to us. Next up, we have our annual free and reduced meals eligibility report.
Eric can, uh, go through the details, but just to point out, um, our free and reduced, the number of students that are on free and reduced meals still hovers right around that forty percent. Um, the amount went down just a little bit this last year, and Eric, can I just go through the details, please? Yeah, so it did go down about five and a half percent, uh, to a, to a school total of thirty-nine percent. Um, I asked Stacy Nelson, you know, a little bit about why that might be. Um, she said that, so there was a COVID waiver, so if you apply, if, if you qualified for other assistance such as battery care or life programs, you automatically, um, qualified for free and reduced lunch. That stipulation fell off in, uh, December of, uh, twenty twenty-four. And so she thought that that was probably the reason why there was a slight decrease is because those automatic qualifiers kind of expired.
Has there been a, like, corresponding effort to make sure people are getting applications in? Or getting, you know, having access to applications?
Yeah, I'll answer that. We have to be very careful in how we, um, promote the program. Uh, we have to really be careful of privacy, so there's never any individual targeting. However, we have made efforts to ensure that people are aware of the application process generally. Um, in fact, in our last update that came from the district last week, uh, we included the information once again. It, it's really included a lot at enrollment time. Uh, but then also, we received notice that with the government shutdown, um, any federal employee that was furloughed, um, would essentially, their family were qualified, so we wanted to make sure we got that information out. Please note that this report is an October report. Um, pe- people can apply for free and reduced lunch anytime during the school year. So it, it fluctuates throughout the year, but in terms of our October snapshot, it was, um, a couple percent over than last year. And just add to Joe's point, history shows that as we go through the year, that number does increase.
Yeah, if there wasn't a, if very, if the apparent decrease does remain in the numbers, I'd be curious over time if we see a corresponding increase in the number of people who have, uh, are behind on lunch payments. If there's people who maybe had qualified now don't for whatever reason, and now they're falling behind on the payments, so I'm worried that the angel fund to be there. We should kind of watch that balance of how people are moving.
The first thing popping in my head about the decrease really is about, um, the paperwork of it, especially if families that were qualified automatically and now they have to complete the report correct to qualify. And, and, um, not all pa- not all families are comfortable with this or have the ability to get it done, get a return and, and everything. So is there something that we do to support families if they not help in completing? Like, do we have them available, parent teacher nights or orientation nights, or with staff to support the families coming in to help them fill it out if they want help? And also language barriers?
We, we do have many opportunities for support, whether it be up here at the ASC where I think a lot of people would get support, but the application forms are also available in each school office. Um, whether or not they're real prominently displayed during parent teacher conferences, I'm not sure. And again, we have to be very careful, we, we don't hand forms to any individual, um, you know, due to privacy stuff. But, um, and, and that's something we could talk with the principals about too, is to find out if there's anything more we can do to make it a little more prominent, again, not identifying anybody. But even at the building level, I know in some cases, the best practice might not be to have it out where people need to take it in front of other people. So it's kind of a balance, but I agree, I do think the paperwork part of it could be partially responsible. We didn't see a huge dramatic, which I'm glad, at the same time, we know the need is still there.
Any other questions or discussion on the free and reduced meals report? Thanks for, uh, bringing this report to us. Next up, we have a discussion of new course proposals for the twenty twenty-six point seven school year.
And, uh, Brian will take this one.
All right, um, so this is part of our staffing and course offering timeline that, uh, you reviewed a couple meetings back. Uh, annually, we bring, uh, this report forward. Uh, this will be the first time you see this, uh, this will come back again in December as well. Um, the first piece of information, uh, to point out, uh, will be, uh, new course proposal section, which, um, looking ahead to next school year at the high school, there is only one, um, proposed new course for next school year. Um, and this will be one that will be asking you to approve next, uh, next month. Uh, the art department is recommending and proposing a new semester-long course entitled Graphic Design. Uh, the course will be a The course will be a half-credit in value. And the intent will be to be a dual-credit course with our transcripted agreement with CBTC. Part of the reason for recommending this is CBTC is making a program to their art programs. And a current course that we have transcripted with CBTC, they discontinued that program and then as such, the course. So this current school year, we've lost a dual-credit course in the art department. So this is an opportunity to bring something that is more industry-recognized and in alignment with that. And you can see the work that the students are doing. Having had a conversation with the art department, high school administration, this is extremely thoughtful in both the timing and the application for it. So it's being supported both at the building and at the district level. The other information that's included is included just for update purposes. Each year, as part of the registration process, high school administration asks departments to review current course offerings and names and descriptions to see what updates might be needed or possible as they move forward. So you can see a few in art, social studies, English, and tech yet where there are name changes. I won't go through the full list there as they're there for your review. But in the art department, I want to point out, the previous drawing, painting two, there's a TC next to it. The recommendation is to drop that TC, which stands for transcripted credit. That is the course that I was referencing where CBTC does not offer that for transcripted credit anymore. And then the other name changes represent some minor updates to help with the registration process and alignment. Along with the descriptions that go with those courses. I will point out in the English department, the change from English one to English two, to English nine and ten. If you recall, last school year, the English department made some tweaks where many of the elective courses in the eleventh and twelfth grade year were updated to be taken for graduation-required credits. And changing this English nine and ten from English one and two helps delineate that these are freshman and sophomore offerings as opposed to courses that students could take some other time for graduation requirement after the ninth and tenth grade. So at this point, I'll entertain any questions if there are any. Otherwise, you'll be asked to approve the graphic design course next time.
Any questions for Brian or discussion on the course proposals? All right, thank you very much. Next up, we have discussion about the renewal of our school safety plans, which are long. I don't know, part of people try to read them all, they're long.
Yeah, as noted in the background, we work very closely with the Office of School Safety in Madison. And I think it was about six years ago, actually more than that, that some new requirements came for schools. And at that time, a safety assessment had to be completed and new school safety plans had to be generated. We contracted with season ten out of Chippewa Falls. They did great work, gave us very comprehensive school safety plans. Every three years, those plans are reviewed and we are up for another review. And things that have been added along the way, reunification procedures have been added. I think that was the last score round. And this time, we're really focusing on some of the unstructured times in our schools, whether it be before, after school, during passing periods, sometimes during lunch or recess. We're really kind of paying close attention to those. We do partner with law enforcement, so our building principals are really busy. And this is an extra duty for them this year. School safety assessments have already been completed at each building. And now our building principals are working with the law enforcement and taking recommendations from the Office of School Safety to add any additional language that is needed. So these will be coming to the board in December. You can review the previous version of the plan. Then when the new plans are available, they will be uploaded for your review. I don't anticipate many large-scale changes, other than what I mentioned with those unstructured times in our schools.
When the updates are ready for us to come, will it be possible to add like a redlining or have that on?
Yes, we will provide an executive summary of each one.
Great, thank you, go ahead.
This reminded me of a question I had, I got from a parent last week, which is a parent was wondering, you know, the sorts of, when we do the drills, the safety drills in school, they were kind of wondering for kids in different age levels, how that is framed for them. So Eric, it's kind of explained in that age-appropriate way. And I wasn't sure, I kind of looked at it, I wasn't sure like where to find that. So that's something maybe that if you have that question, if there's a way to direct them, what the students' perspective on school safety is at different age levels, that'd be interesting.
That's a good comment. And I guess with any question, by all means, please direct it to me or really the building principal would be the person. I can tell you that that's something that our staff has prioritized. And really, especially at the youngest age levels, our classroom teachers are the ones that talk to the students ahead of time about the drills and what to expect and why they're doing them. Our classroom teachers do a really good job with that. At the other levels, it's more of announcement, here it comes, you know, and the students are accustomed to it. And it's sad, frankly, that, you know, people have to get accustomed to it, but we take school safety very, very seriously.
Any other questions or discussion on school safety plan updates? And this is coming back next month?
Correct.
All right, next up, we have a renewal of the Boys and Girls Club partnership contract.
This will also be coming forward in December. And that December meeting is going to be a big one, with only one meeting in November and only one in December. But we are up, our agreement with the Boys and Girls Club is a five-years agreement, and it is up for renewal consideration. We have been very pleased with our partnership with the Boys and Girls Club. We are looking to recommend another five years of partnership with the Boys and Girls Club. And there has been a small increase to the fee. But that, again, that fee will be paid for out of the fund eighty. So it's not coming out of the classroom budgets or the general fund. But we do think this is a good program for our community.
Yeah, I think having the Boys and Girls Club in our schools is just a fantastic resource for families. It's such a good program to have available to our kids. I feel like I have to ask, this seems like it's outside of the scope of what Boys and Girls Club does. But has there ever been any discussion of having a program that would be available to kindergarten first graders as well?
We do have some programming with early advisors. I know that's not what you're exactly addressing there, Rachel. We continue to look at different options in our school district and with our strategic plan, that is something that we continue to look at. We don't have an immediate recommendation. I can tell you, there's been some recent discussions with the YMCA as well. So again, that's something we continue to look at, it's not really applicable to the Boys and Girls Club partnership.
I should also just say, it seems like this small fee increase is a worthwhile investment. Does anyone else have questions or discussion on the Boys and Girls Club agreement? All right, then we'll vote on that in December. Next up, we have discussion of the twenty twenty-six, twenty-seven school year calendar.
This really is one of the more immediate steps for the calendar. There are several steps that will take place after tonight and before the board has the calendar for review. Our goal is to have this for you to consider at the December meeting, it may go on to January, depending on how much collaboration is needed. But we do plan to talk with our staff members at our QIC meeting in December, also with the building principals next week. I do appreciate the building principals have already provided some initial feedback. But what you can see is, you know, every year, the calendar is a little bit different based on how everything falls. We're looking to have a very similar calendar next year to this year in terms of having three jumpstart days at the end of August. We would still have our one hundred and seventy-two student days. The winter break wouldn't be quite as long in an effort to try to get done the first week of June. The last day of school for students would be June third. And then you can see the different days for parent-teacher conferences and everything. One change that we are discussing, and I know we put this in your background, is whether or not to consider moving the graduation date at Menominee High School. Mr. Drake can always speak to this too, if you have any questions. But what the work that Mr. Drake and his team have done, they've identified that Menominee is only one of two schools in the Bay Rivers Conference that is still having graduation during the weekend. We have also heard from people in the community, from parents, from staff members, from students frankly, that having graduation on the Sunday of Memorial Day weekend is becoming more difficult. We did have an issue with the sound company that we used for years, no longer able to provide a service on that weekend. Mr. Drake had a scramble last spring, we were able to find a different sound company, but we do not feel that that's a reliable solution. That's not the sole reason for this, but that's one reason. The other thing too is we have hundredclassmen that perform at graduation, whether we're talking about the choir, orchestra, or band. And that's becoming more difficult for families as more and more people appear to be traveling during Memorial Day weekend. So Mr. Drake has been working with Mr. Riley. And right now, they did a survey with parents for this current year, because there was some discussion about, you know, is this something you would even consider for two thousand twenty-six? The results of the survey, it was a slight majority of people that would rather see it not on Memorial Day weekend. But in the survey, there was also an opportunity for people to provide additional feedback. And there were some pretty significant reasons why not to change it for this spring. In some cases, people had already arranged flights, they've already arranged family vacations and such. So the recommendation is not to do anything with this current year calendar. And so what we're talking about is next year's calendar. And there's still some work that needs to be done, still some collaboration. We want to make sure that we're trying to avoid as many issues as possible. The original reason why graduation was put on Memorial Day weekend about ten years ago was to try to avoid all the different conflicts. It was around that time that we had an issue where students qualified for the National Science Olympia Competition. And I think we changed graduation towards the end of that school year to try to accommodate that. So that's the nice thing about having it during Memorial Day weekend, but we also know that it's becoming more of a hardship for a number of people. So right now, in this draft calendar, we have graduation tentatively scheduled for Friday evening, May twenty-eighth. But I think some more work needs to be done. Right now, that looks like a good date, but when we start looking at potential cancellations for, you know, different student events. The ones that we can control, it's a little easier. You know, Mr. Riley can plan ahead and schedule. But the challenge comes in, for instance, like with sports, if there's a WIAA track meet, is it the sectional deal? The sectional track meet is scheduled for that Thursday. If it was to be canceled on that Thursday because of thunderstorm, they don't cancel track very much. But if there's a thunderstorm or some other real severe reason, the makeup day would be that following day. And that would cause a conflict with a number of our students and families. So we'll have a more concrete recommendation for you at the next meeting. But we just want to try to, you know, anticipate as much as we possibly can. But beyond graduation or with graduation, are there any other questions or any parameters or direction that the board would like to provide tonight?
I have a question, Joe, if you mention, I think you just said that winter break is a little shortened. Can you, I'm not seeing that, can you show me?
Yeah, this school year, we actually had two full weeks off for winter break. But next year, we didn't want to have one, students come back for one day, students and staff this year. Because I think, is it the twenty-third is Tuesday this coming year, this coming December? And our staff have made it very clear that having off on the twenty-third is important to them. So for this current school year, it would have only been just the Monday. So instead, when the calendar for this school year was approved, it was approved a two full weeks for winter break. Next year, with the twenty-third being on a Wednesday, we can have two student days that week. So it's actually more similar to what our, and that's probably why you're questioning, this is a pretty typical winter break. This year, two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six, I would say is an abnormally long winter break.
Thank you. When is the next QIC meeting and will they be considering this schedule?
Yes, it's the first Monday of December, and this is already part of the agenda for that meeting, yes. It will share it out with staff tomorrow. So in the building, staff will have an opportunity to talk at the building level and then talk to their QIC rep, who will then be able to share information with administration at the QIC meeting.
So if we optimistically vote on this in December, at that point, staff will have an opportunity to voice concerns or plan?
Correct.
Any questions or discussion on the district calendar for twenty twenty-six, twenty-seven? On to our twenty twenty-six, twenty-seven budget plan and timeline.
So the board has seen the same budget plan and timeline, I think this is my twelfth year. So this will be the thirteenth time that we have followed this timeline. I think it's worked very, very well. Eric actually expanded it a little bit last year in terms of having additional building level, opportunity for building level communication. And I know he plans to do that again this year. Eric, is there anything about the timeline beyond that you want to share?
No, it's just the change of dates, but everything else is been the same from previous years.
I always find it a little crazy in November, like the board just voted on the budget in the last meeting and approved the levy. And here we are at the very next meeting, it's like, all right, let's get it going again. It is, it's a never-ending cycle, but I think that's probably why we've had so much success. I would like to also point out, it's one of our next items, you know, mid-year budget hearing, that's also included in this timeline. And I think that's been well-received over the years as well.
Any questions or discussion on the budget timeline? I guess I'm curious, I apologize, I didn't ask this in advance, but do you have any, how's it gone with the additional like budget discussions at the building level?
Well, last year it went really, really great. It was, you know, good to connect with people and get their ideas and some of them we could implement in this year's budget. So I would say it was a success.
Wonderful, that's great to hear. Other questions or discussion? Shutting along, we, as mentioned, are now going to discuss the date for the mid-year budget hearing. So that is scheduled now for Monday, January twelfth, twenty twenty-six, at five o'clock. Oh yeah, the preceding our regular board meeting, right? So we do this separately than the annual meeting. So that comes right before our regular board meeting here in January. And I assume we would intend to hold that meeting here at the ASC. Any questions about that, concerns about the date? Great. And typically, we've been able to have that meeting, have a short recess, and start at five forty-five with our regular board meeting. All right.
Rachel, in the event that we end up having a longer discussion than anticipated, we always could adjourn the mid-year budget hearing and then re-adjourn after the regular meeting's complete. I don't, we've always had time, but I'm just saying, there's options, we wouldn't be time limited.
Great, yeah, that's a good point. Any final questions, budget hearing, moving on. Next up, discussion of the board's self-evaluation, a possible board retreat. We talked about this a little bit last time. I had the hope to start reaching out to folks just to check in about this and didn't get to it. But Joe very helpfully put together a possible timeline that would include, you know, starting tomorrow, having access to that online board self-evaluation tool to be completed by November thirtieth. And then we could discuss scheduling either an extra meeting in December or an earlier time in December, where we could go over the results of that together. And in that case, we would be looking at having kind of goals as a board, individual goals in place for folks to take into consideration when they attend the WASD convention in January. I think that's more or less how we did that timeline last year. Does that sound okay to everybody? Good. Do we want to talk about a December schedule? We only have a regular board meeting in December, that's December eighth. Would it make sense to folks to meet earlier or stay late on that date? To go over our board self-evaluation, or would folks want to try to schedule an additional meeting? Go ahead.
I would recommend against December twenty-second, which is this is a possibility.
Yeah, I missed that.
The fifteenth, I think would be possible, or the eighth is kind of, I don't think I would push it all the way to January, except hopefully get things by then. Forget it's early in November, so I would suggest if we can be in December, I think it works well.
That's true, although if we did push it into January. That's true, although if we did push it into January, we could, you know, push out the time, you know, to do the survey. That's a good point, yes. So the content online was December twenty-second as a possible date, but as has just been discussed, the district will be closed that day. So I assume folks are not planning to be here or available or thinking of coming to school for its self-evaluation. What are folks then, so I guess we'd be, either be looking at elongating our meeting one way or the other on the eighth, or potentially scheduling an extra meeting, for example, on Monday the fifteenth?
I feel like the eight might already be a little bit heavy with your content. We've got one November meeting and then one December meeting. In theory, I love the idea of like it all happen on one night, but it's going to be productive. I, I would consider we have the fifteenth.
Does anybody here tonight have a conflict with the fifteenth? You do?
I can see it's gonna be a complicated one.
You as well? Okay.
To Amber's point, I do think it'll be a long agenda in terms of number of items. I think a lot of these items, I, I don't anticipate probably a real long discussion. I, I think we'd probably be able to move through the agenda fairly rapidly. But again, it's totally up to the board. I'll come on the fifteenth, that's no problem. But if you're worried about time, I, I think, you know, especially looking at tonight, I, I think we'd probably be maybe around an hour maybe for the meeting. And could always get something to eat. But it's really up to the board. I know everyone's busy that time of year. I looked at the concert schedule too. There's a concert, a band concert on the eighth. There's a player concert on the fifteenth. So either way, we're gonna have a, a conflict.
That's a really good point. I mean, I think we've discussed a number of things here tonight that were due to go down in December. And I, based on the discussions we just had, don't expect to need a lot of time on roles. So maybe get it all done in one night, might be an easier task. Go ahead.
I like, well, I told Nate lately, but I was just thinking, if you talk about the choir and band concerts, if we kept both of them, we kind of streamlined, maybe we would be done in time to go to the concert. For time, school process starts.
What about earlier on the eighth?
Would folks be able to come in or does any, does anyone not be able to come in earlier on the eighth?
And the reading advisory council for the D P I, but I can sneak out early too. It's online.
Oh, yeah. Oh, no, like.
It starts at four, goes to five thirty, and then I come here for the school. But it, yeah, we can maybe have it, this is important.
How long do you think the discussion about the survey would take? The board works so well together. I do think there'll be goals and things to talk about. I, I don't know if it'll be a real marathon or discussion.
I think we could do it in an hour. That would be my expectation. I mean, we could probably talk for a longer time if we felt like it, but I think we could be very productive in an hour. Show of hands, prefer to come in early on the eighth? But what are our options? Should we come in, come in early around the eighth, have an additional meeting on the fifteenth? Or stay late on the eighth? Those are our three options. Of those three, you can vote for one. Prefer coming early on the eighth? Is that a fan that would make fun? Okay, prefer, prefer the fifteenth? Okay, for first day, wait on the eighth? Two, you didn't vote.
I can vote.
Okay, all right.
I can do either.
Okay, okay. Let's kind of quickly plan on coming in early on the eighth. That was democratic, wasn't it? Five o'clock, five, six, four forty-five? Four forty-five?
Perfect.
Okay. As was discussed with the budget hearing, we are on a roll and want to adjourn our discussion and resume it at the end of the regular board meeting. We can always do that. Okay, four forty-five. I will, and that's for Dominique, just make sure that works for her.
We'll have some Christmas goodies, or holiday goodies, I should say.
Oh, that's good. All right. Finally, I have this related to next meeting date, board committees and the boards. I never really, it looks like they're backing up, but Amy's gonna share with us a few things that she took away from the Legislative Advocacy Conference that she just attended. First, I'm gonna run through these things and then I turn over to you.
Sure.
All right. And so we have a regular school board meeting November tenth, that's now. Thanksgiving break is twenty, November twenty-fourth to twenty-eighth. QIC meets December first, and our regular board meeting is December eighth. Winter break starts on December twenty-second. And then tomorrow, the state report cards are released, so that's exciting. Yeah, that's it, go ahead.
If I could just mention a couple things, Rachel, and this just got added today. With the state report cards being re- released tomorrow, we really would have liked to share those with you tonight, but they're still not publicly available. We do want to share them, and we don't want to wait until December. So what our plan is, is tomorrow, Brian will have a message ready to go. And tomorrow morning, right away, we will send the board an update that has information about our school district, state accountability report cards. So the board will see them first. If you have any questions or concerns, you can, you know, they'll hold me right away tomorrow. We plan to share them with staff because the day after our board meeting, I send an update to our staff. We plan to share them with staff tomorrow at the end of the day. So there'll be, you know, a short window there. But then we have board members, you'll have an opportunity to see them in case you do have questions. And then before we leave for Thanksgiving, there will be a Thanksgiving update that goes out to families next week. And we plan to share report card information with families next week. We will also have it on the school board meeting agenda for December, so the board can talk about it as a whole. But we just didn't want board members to be surprised as this information goes out, so you know the timeline. And then lastly, I appreciate Jenny put together an election update for the upcoming school board election. And again, typically, we would have, you know, like a board report, but with no second meeting in November, we just wanted to fill you in on the dates that the information will go out in the paper here in November. And then there's key dates that people can follow in terms of filing notice of non-candidacy or the deadline for candidates to file valid access. So if you're one of the board members up for reelection, please pay attention to that.
Thank you very much. All right, take it away, Amy.
Okay, first of all, I'd like to thank the school district for giving the opportunity to go. I always like legislative conferences because I'm kind of a, I mean, a political junkie, I guess you might say. But anyhow, it was very well done. There were five different sessions, and it was in Stevens Point. And I thank Jenny, she made sure my reservation was in place, and I had no problems. They knew who I was when I walked in the door, so that worked out well. The first session was a federal update by COSPA. There was a public affairs group senior policy advisor there. And he was pretty much giving the updates about what's happening at the federal level with education. And he didn't have too many words of positiveness, a lot of grimness, because it's still so much up in the air about the Department of Education and where that's going. And it looks like students with disabilities could suffer just because that may be moved to another department, and it might be, you know, double the work for somebody to take care of that. And also, because of federal mandates and the present administration, a lot is happening as far as taking local control away. And so, you know, like executive orders and things that are happening. And so that's all something to be looked at. And I think we've already discovered a lot of that as we've been going on the last ten months with the present administration. Then the next thing was understanding the state budget report. And it was some WASP consultants that took that on. And, and of course, they talked about how the budget is much better than what was anticipated, but there's still work to be done. And for instance, the absence of General School Aid, which we all know has been, has had a huge hit. Also, with vouchers taking off, it's going bigger and bigger, and there's really no limit anymore. And so that's a huge thing. And then, as I mentioned to, I talked to Joe and Rachel today about the possibility of getting the voucher on our tax bill, which we are going to start that discussion in the near future. Also, there's other districts already doing that, I think Green Bay and there's a couple others that have also been able to get that done. But I think that's important that our, our community members know exactly how much is going to those schools because that comes right off the top of the general fund, so. And it's like two different systems, a private system and a public system. And then, but then the next thing was a panel with four board members from Ch- Chogwagmen, Hudson, DC Embers, and Franklin. And they talked about how they track legislation issues at the board level. Some have liaisons that actually pay attention to that and how sometimes superintendents are in charge of that, sending down, you know, mandates or things that are happening in legislature. And they said the best way to get in contact with them would be, or in contact is to contact legislators, always be respectful, build relationships, let, let them get to know you and tell stories, that's really important. Tell actual stories that are impacting what the budget might be giving for you. And then that kind of led into, one of the last things they had was Senator Path from Alaska, and then Joel Kitchens, I think he's over in Sturgeon Bay. They actually had a little panel discussion and talk. And of course, being one on different sides of the coin, they actually did pretty well. They were respectful, and there were a few things I didn't agree with. For instance, Path said that, you know, it's very important that we fund education and that we need to quit going, having schools have to go back around this all the time. And, and then also voucher schools came up. And of course, Kitchens agrees with them and says that they are actually, private schools are actually getting better at being accountable, which I don't know if that's true or not, but that's what he said. And of course, Path said, no, they, you know, we don't need to have those vouchers and so whatever. Both were in some agreement, because I know this has come up, and I know, Joe, you've written letters about it too, about the retirees coming back to help with our teacher shortages. And they both had some agreement on that, so that's kind of a good thing. So hopefully, you know, they can't, they didn't say, somebody asked them, well, you know, how long do you think this is gonna take? Because it's been kind of just sitting there, kind of stuck for a while. They didn't have any idea, but they were gonna keep pushing for it. And, and they both mentioned, opened our policies to, you know, come see them. They say the best form of communication is really actually talk to their staff, you know, or go through email, which is the best way to connect. Something else that you probably already know, that Tony Evers actually signed a bill that bans cell phones during class time in the whole state. So I'm pretty proud to say that we're ahead of the game. And I know this year, it's probably even more restricted because I think it's more consistent across the board, which I think is really good. And the, and the reason, and it's something I want to tell you too, is when I was in the classroom with Amber, those kids, I think they didn't like the idea of having a cellphone ban, but they understood it. And I think some of them realized that it does take away from their engagement. So I thought that was kind of cool that, you know, maybe they didn't like it, but at least they understood it. So I think, I think we're raising some kids that might be understanding some things that, that makes them maybe a little more engaged and maybe mature those bit. I mean, some of us still are, to, to short-term, I am at certain times as well. So, yeah, and so then, the, the, the one thing that I thought was a really cool thing was there is a research, and maybe you guys know about this, I don't know, Joe, maybe you know about it, the Wisconsin Policy Forum. It's a site, and it has all kinds of graphs and information about trends, like talking about enrollment across the state, compare schools from schools, you can compare states, race, teachers, all these kinds of things. And I thought that was the coolest thing. And so, I mean, I could probably get into that site and spend hours upon hours just looking at that data. So if you don't know about it, you can, I think you can just probably Google it, then it'll come up. And I think maybe in the slides that they, they had, I think there's probably also a link. And I'll try to maybe get that out to Joe, and he can send it to everybody, so he can take a look. But that was really exciting, and I really appreciated being able to go. And of course, the biggest, the best thing about going to those things is networking with other board members. So, and there was time to do that, so, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for the update. And yeah, if you have anything, any materials or filings you want to send, we'll make sure to get out to board members. Any questions or discussion on our upcoming dates? All right, thanks, everybody. Organizing a motion to adjourn. All right, we can adjourn, thanks everyone.